Good evening and welcome to the August 3, 2022 Select Board Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:01. We are meeting, we have a hybrid meeting tonight. There are four of us here in person and Rob Share is joining us via Zoom. Also joining us on Zoom is our Town Manager, Michael Herbert. We are being recorded and livestreamed tonight by our friends at WACA TV. And with that, let's go ahead and open this up to citizens' participation. I would ask that if anyone on Zoom wants to participate, to use the raise hand function on Zoom, and then we will, we'll recognize you. I see Mark DeSoni. Mark, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mark DeSoni. How's everybody doing?
We're good. How are you, Mark?
All right. Now, I can't see all the Zoom pictures in front of me. Only one's got a mask. You got re-hit again, Chairperson?
I'm sorry, could you, I didn't, could you repeat?
Did you get hit by COVID again?
No, I'm just being very, very cautious. I'm good, but thank you.
Okay. Just making sure about everything. I'm sure that K H is doing pretty well for himself. Yeah, keep smiling, keep laughing. We know how we are now together. I just want, as I say, it's been a pretty good summer, heat-wise and everything, and appreciate the, it was on around the clock with the board helping about the cooler than spots in the library and everything that was out there for the first heat wave. I just wanted to make sure that it's going to be the same thing for this coming heat wave, three, four days. If everything's going to be over libraries, community center, and all the yellow, it's going to be kept on, looking after and all that. Here at this house, we're, we're all set. We are fully vaccinated and double boosted, so we're all kind of all set for COVID, for that, to get the best shot at this heat back. And I'm going to put things back out there. I might be getting out there, be a little more public, starting at the end of August. I'm going to start doing what I've been doing for the past thirty, forty-plus years, just getting out in the sports world, going out to Framingham State to help them with their football game, but I've missed a couple of years. So I get to get out there and be myself and be the coach and mentor and the turtle that's out there. So other than that, it's been a good summer and in this house, got eighteen taken care of. My dad, three or four people all day long, morning, morning, afternoon, night. And this is why a little more chivalry, because everything is getting better all around me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good to hear from you. Is there anyone else for citizens' participation? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, which is to vote to award and execute the bond documents for the Mendez School and Public Safety Feasibility Study. Michael, I'm going to turn it over to you. I know you have some information to share about this.
Sure, I'll just give you, I'm trying to give you a summary of what the borrowing is and what the results are. So on July 28, we went out to market for a $47,850,000 general obligation bond issue. So these bonds were to permanently finance the Public Safety Feasibility Study. If you recall, we had already permanently financed the construction. We are permanently financing a portion of the Mendez Elementary School project that we had already been borrowing through short-term borrowing, and then also about $20 million of new money for the elementary school to fund the ongoing construction costs. We had received a total of twelve bids. The winning bid went to JP Morgan Securities with a true interest cost of 3.5. This was a little bit better than what we were projecting going into the sale. We thought it was going to be around 3.6 or 3.7. We didn't receive a huge premium, but we did get enough of a premium to cover the issuance costs. So for the, for the school project, we were initially going to just do notes for a few years to minimize the impact to taxpayers, but the interest rates started rising so rapidly, we decided to go ahead and lock in rates now for a portion of the school project. So we've scheduled, we've structured it to where the debt service has minimal principal payments in the first fiscal year to help offset the interest costs. And so the impact has pulled up a year. And so we'll also look at a future bond issue for the final construction costs once we get all of our MSBA reimbursement and we know what that final cost will be.
A question for you, Michael. Yeah, does this, the borrowings put us in line with what was projected for the tax impacts to the residents?
So with the public safety building, both the construction and the feasibility, yes, it does, it does fall in line with what we had projected and put out there. I believe it's less than $90. The school is a little bit different, so with the money that we've borrowed so far, we're currently within line with those projections, but again, we've got 15 million more that we've got to, we've got to borrow for. Once we get a little bit more clarity into what the actual costs are and what the reimbursements actually are going to be, so it's probably going to exceed that, the amount that we had projected. And once it's all, all in total, we'll borrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yolanda, go ahead.
So, Michael, in looking at the very far outer years, there's really high numbers in regard to the last payments. Is the idea that as we get further into this, we'll re-issue something so that we won't have those two hits? Or is that, you know, I mean, for 47, the 11 million, and for 52, the ninety, you know, the 9.8 million?
So those are called term bonds. What you see, the majority of them are what they call serial bonds.
Right.
And just for one each year. And then in the last year, you have basically rolled up five years each of two, in two term bonds. It would, so it's essentially going to be very similar payments on an annual basis than what we would be consistently, what we had been consistently making. It's just the way it's structured.
Okay.
Is a little different. However, to your point, Yolanda, these are callable bonds, meaning that we would have an opportunity to refinance them, and I believe they're callable after seven years.
Okay. So should, should we see interest rates going back down at some point? We could redo these and save some money, long-term? Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Joe, do you have any questions?
Just real quick, thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, whoever the treasurer is at the time, I would hope that they would do that automatically and not have to be told to start looking at, you know, lower rates once the rates start going down. I would hope that would be the case.
Oh, yeah, we constantly are looking at the interest rate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, Michael, just to, just to clarify, so like, you know, the question Yolanda had for the larger payments that are, you know, for 2047, 2052, those are locked in at 3%? Even, even those?
That's the coupon rate, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, great, thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Rob, do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I think if we're all set, I think Steve is ready to do his reading. He's got quite a bit there.
So this is one of the benefits that it's accrued to the clerk of the, this is one of the benefits that the clerk of the, of the Select Board enjoys. And there's actually two. There's taking minutes when our executive assistant is not available and reading a bond issue. So I guess I'll start. If anybody needs to take a break, feel free to, feel free to do so. It's going to take a while. So this issue is titled, "Vote of the Select Board." "I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Ashland, Mass., the Town (in parentheses) certify that at a meeting of the Board held August 3, 2022, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the Board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the $47,850,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 Bonds of the Town dated August 8, 2022, and in parentheses, the Bonds, to JP Morgan Securities LLC at the price of $48,286,67.63 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The Bonds shall be payable on August 1 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2023, $125,000 at 5%. 2024, $905,000 at 5%. 2025, $950,000 at 5%. 2026, $1 million at 5%. 2027, $1,050,000 at 5%. 2028, $1,105,000 at 5%. 2029, $1,160,000 at 5%. 2030, $1,220,000 at 5%. 2031, $1,270,000 at 5%. 2032, $1,325,000 at 5%. 2033, $1,380,000 at 5%. 2020, 2034, $1,440,000 at 5%. 2035, $1,495,000 at 5%. 2036, $1,560,000 at 4%. 2037, $1,625,000 at 4%. 2038, $1,700,000 at 4%. 2039, $1,755,000 at 4%. 2040, $1,830,000 at 4%. 2041, $1,905,000 at 4%. 2042, $1,980,000 at 4%. 2047, $11,180,000 at 3%. And 2052, $9,800,000 at 3%. Further voted that the Bonds maturing on August 1, 2047, and August 1, 2052, each a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Term bond due August 1, 2047. Date, August 1, 2043. Principal amount of $2,060,000. August 1 of 2044, $2,150,000. August 1, 2045, $2,230,000. August 1, 2046, $2,320,000. And August 1 of 2047, $2,420,000. Term bond due on August 1 of 2052. Dated August 1, 2048, $2,515,000. August 1, 2049, $2,620,000. August 1, 2050, $2,510,000. August 1, 2051, $1,100,000. August 1 of 2052, $1,145,000. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the Bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated July 1, 2022, and the final official statement dated July 28, 2022, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the Bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the Town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the Town Treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Council to the Town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the Bonds as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the Bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the Town Treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the Bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the Bonds, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the Town Clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the Town Clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, parentheses 2, parentheses B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remained so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the Bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 18-25, as amended, and this is dated August 3 of 2022, and will be signed by the clerk of the Select Board upon completion of the vote.
Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. That was a lot. That's good, good job there. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries five to zero. We have, we have a Bonds to sign at the end of our meeting. Thank you, Michael. Thank you to Cindy and to Brittany for pulling all this together for us. Thank you.
Yeah, they did a great job. Absolutely great job.
Okay.
In terms of signing the Bonds, can I come over tomorrow, like either before or after working hours, Susan? Can you guys leave them somewhere or what is that? I gotta go to, I'll be in Worcester tomorrow, early and late, so.
Rob, I don't think it will be necessary to have your actual signature on them, as long as we have a quorum on the Bonds.
Oh, you don't need me, huh? Okay.
Well, I was trying to say that without saying that, you know?
No, that's fine.
I just, I think they have to be delivered.
Yeah, great. Okay, sounds good.
But, but thank you, Rob. We're good. So moving on to our next agenda item under Old New Business, vote on the response to the Open Meeting Law complaint filed by Stephen Morgan on July 6, 2022, for a violation that occurred on June 2, 2022. So I know that there was some communications and a letter that was in our packets from Attorney Castro, which is the response. Just to kind of briefly kind of go through this, and, Michael, please correct me, because I know that there was a lot of back and forth on this, but it's, it seems that the original complaint that had come in on 6/12 was in regards to executive session minutes that didn't have attachments. I know Susan Robey had gone back and forth with Mr. Morgan on, on those, but it seems like there wasn't an official Select Board action that was taken, which was why the second complaint had been filed. Is that, is that correct? So basically, the response that, that Attorney Castro had put together for us will cover both of those complaints, correct?
That is correct. Mr. Morgan had also filed an additional one on July 27, but that has been withdrawn. There was just some confusion with regards to that. So he has officially withdrawn that July 27. So this would cover the June and early July.
Okay, sounds good. Does anyone on the Board have any questions? No, we're good. Rob, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. So if there's no questions, could?
I move that we accept the draft response to the Open Meeting Law complaint filed by Stephen Morgan with edits as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Michael. So I think we're, we're all set for that, and we have no further action that we need to take for, for any Open Meeting Law actions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good, awesome. Good. All right, so moving on in our agenda to the Town Manager's evaluation. So there was a summary that was put in everyone's packets. I don't know if everyone has had a chance to kind of go through it, but first of all, I want to thank the Board for, for all of your responses. As part of this, I pulled all of this together into a summary response, which I'll read. As part of our responsibilities, the Select Board hires both the General Counsel and Town Manager, and we review the performance of both annually. Tonight, we will be reviewing Town Manager, Michael Herbert. Michael Herbert has been with the Town of Ashland for nine years, three as an Assistant Town Manager and six years as, Assistant Town Manager and six years as our Town Manager. During this time, Ashland has seen growth and the need for major infrastructure investment while continuing to strive to keep the community feel which our residents love about Ashland. The Town Manager review process begins with Michael completing his self-evaluation. Each Select Board member completes an individual evaluation and meets separately with Michael. Those evaluation forms are sent to the Chair, who compiles these into a combined review, which we will discuss tonight. The annual Town Manager evaluation consists of numerical ratings in ten performance areas, which are supplemented with written comments. This statement is a summary of the individual evaluations from Board members. The ratings were out of a five-point scale, one being unsatisfactory and five being outstanding. His overall rating was 4.2, which exceeds job standards, and the breakdown of each section is as follows. Personal characteristics, a 4.4. Professionalism, 4.0. Public relations/communications, 4.4. Board support/relations, 4.1. Community leadership, 4.2. Organizational leadership, 4.3. Personnel management, 4.2. Financial management, 4.6. Operations and infrastructure, 4.3. And planning, 3.8. The areas that the Board felt are Michael's strengths are his honesty and personal characteristics, visibility within the community/community leadership, communication, financial management, and organizational leadership. And I have some quotes from the, from the evaluations. "Michael's recent commitment in finding a new police chief and the process he developed was unquestionably top-notch and extremely professional and transparent." Quote, "Michael is well-respected among his department heads and provides great leadership. The staff feels supported, work well as a team, and genuinely like the work they do for Ashland." I attribute that to Michael and his leadership. Quote, "Finance and budget are strong areas for Michael. He has a great team in place to support him in this area of work." Quote, "The Town Manager is very good and effective at providing community leadership. He has strong relationships with elected officials, and this is a strength." This past year brought on many challenges as we emerged out of the crisis mode of the COVID-19 pandemic. We began four major infrastructure projects, downtown revitalization, a new public safety building, the new Mendez Elementary School, and the long-awaited Route 126 project in partnership with MassDOT. In addition to those major projects, we conducted a new police chief search, completed a racial equity study, brought new businesses to Ashland, and had multiple applications filed for large mixed-use developments in town. And that is only a portion of the work that the Town Staff has worked on this year. A concern raised by multiple members of the Board is around us being overly ambitious as a community, that Michael and the staff is stretched thin, which can't be sustainable in the long term. Quote, "As Ashland continues to develop and change, a major concern is Michael's continuing ability to manage priorities and not be a victim of burnout. There are numerous challenges facing local government, including issues unique to Town Managers/Administrators, and it is important that the Select Board is aware and sensitive on placing unrealistic expectations on our management team." Other areas that were mentioned for improvement is his communication with Select Board members and making sure information is provided to all members equally, as well as delegating more to his management team and staff whenever possible. Overall, the Board strongly supports the work, the work that Michael has done over the past year and has rated him as exceeds job standards rating. We feel that Ashland is well-positioned for the future. Quote, "Michael has been a strong asset to Ashland since becoming our Town Manager. Michael's zest, commitment, and passion for the job and the sought-after accomplishments are staggering in nature. Michael's mission statement parallels that of the Select Board mission statement, which provides a sense of commonality and cohesiveness with the current Board. Respectfully submitted, Brandy Kinsman, Chair, Ashland Select Board, dated July 31, 2022." So with that, I'll, does anyone from the Board have any, have any comments? And then I'll let Michael give some comments, too.
I think you said it very nicely. You wrapped it up very nicely, but how I feel, anyway, I'm sure others feel the same way.
Yolanda?
Thank you for compiling that. I think it's one of the hardest jobs as Chair is to take all the information and really capture the feel from all five members. And I think we all appreciate the work that Michael has done. And I, I think Michael is doing a good job, and he has created a great leadership team and a great staff team. So I think we are fortunate to have him. And I always look forward to this exercise of reviewing him. He's one of the people that, you know, he's the person that we manage and have to work with and get to say how we think he's doing. So we are fortunate to have him with everything we have going on in town, and thank you for doing a great compilation.
Sure.
I would just, I think, underscore, you know, some of the comments that you included in your, in your summary about, you know, our expectations as a Board. And, and I think just being sensitive, not necessarily to, to Michael as such, but to the rest of the staff. And, you know, I think in many ways, you know, they, they shoulder, they bear criticisms within our community which aren't quite accurate or fair. And I think we, we all need to be aware of that, and I think we all need to be as supportive of, as we can of the staff that, you know, if we agree that, that, you know, our management team has, has compiled a, a excellent staff, then we need to support them as best we can. And so I think, and, and I do think, you know, I think I, I use the phrase burnout in my, in my review, and I think that's a concern in today's in my, in my review, and I think that's a concern in today's arena, local government arena. And, you know, Michael and I have talked about this, as you know, several times. And, you know, it's a tough gig, being a Town Manager or an administrator today, and a lot of folks are leaving the industry. And, you know, I think we're very fortunate to have a, a top-notch manager. But, you know, I think it's fair to say we don't want to see him get burnt out, or we don't want to see our Assistant Town Manager get burnt out. So, you know, those are things we need to be aware of and sensitive to.
Brandy?
Yep, Rob, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and first of all, thank you, Brandy, for putting this together. And thank you, Michael, for that self, for the evaluation. And we all met with Michael, and I certainly, I found our conversation very constructive. My basic feeling, you know, I rated Michael very highly in a lot of areas. He's an effective and skillful Town Manager and performs at a, a very high level. The, you know, one of the things I think we've talked about burnout or a lot of, you know, the, the workload and number of things that are going on. I think, you know, one of the things we've raised is about communication with the Board. And I think one of the, you know, one of the ways I think we could relieve Michael, I mean, of some of this stuff, is he gets out front on a lot of things that I think, you know, that would benefit by sharing more with the Select Board as elected officials, especially when it comes to policy and communication with residents. So, I think, and that's something I discussed with Michael. I think working on communication and policy judgments and, and certain budget discussions more fully with the Select Board would benefit both of us. So, that's basically my, you know, my observations. I, I did want to, I thought, as, as we all noted, I think the, the Police Chief's search was, seems like a great success and a very great, a very good process. And I think, of course, our financial management is, is very strong. So, I wanted to hit on those, but, so, you know, so congratulations, Michael, on a successful review and look forward to working with you in the coming years. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Michael, did you want to add any comments?
Oh, sure. You didn't think I wouldn't take advantage of this, do you?
Just, just because you're on Zoom doesn't mean you're, you're far away.
No, no. So, first, I, I just want to thank the Board for, you know, going through this process, the conversations that we've had, the feedback that I've received. It's been enlightening. It's been helpful. And quite frankly, it's, it's been, the whole process has been humbling. And I appreciate, you know, in a good, in a good way. And I, I just want to say, I, I know this takes a lot of effort on your parts to do. You know, it takes time and, and energy to put in your own evaluations and meet with me and Brandy, of course, for you to compile it all. So, I greatly appreciate that. I also greatly appreciate the relationships that we have, both, you know, as individual Board members and Town Manager, but then also as the Board and Town Manager. And that cascades down into the rest of our employees as well. The one thing that really, I think, stands out to me is the fact that collectively, we've got a great team. And I want to make sure that the Board feels included as part of that team when I say that. We, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish all the things that, that we have without the Board's leadership and, and the guidance that they've given me and the Board, and the support that the Board's given me as well. So, and the rest of our team. So, I deeply appreciate that and, and want to share that. And then finally, I just can't say enough good things about our employees. They really are top-notch. And, and one of the, the quotes that really stuck out for me was the fact that a lot of our employees, they don't do this job for a paycheck or, I mean, they do it, they do want to get paid and compensated, but they put in, a lot of them put in so many hours over and above what is typically expected of them. And they do it because they, they like this town. They love this town, whether they're residents or not. And you can, I think Board members and I think community members can see that pride in things that we do. And I just, you know, I can't thank our, our employees enough. And, you know, as a subset of that, you know, I really have to thank the Town Manager's Office and the ladies there, Susan and Diane and, and Jen. They just, they do top-notch work, and they do a lot of stuff behind the scenes that a lot of people just don't see, but really kind of make things run and, and make things tick. So, again, this has been a very humbling review, and I, I appreciate it. And I look forward to continuing to work for you.
Thank you, Michael. So, if the Board is amenable to it, to, to, you know, discussing a, a one-year contract extension with Michael? Does that sound, does that, is that, does that work for everybody?
It works. Is that, that's, clearly, that's something that you're, you're looking to do?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, why not? Okay.
No, no, no. I definitely, I definitely would be excited to do, to do something like that. Just officially, we'd need to have it as, as, Brandy and I talked a little bit about this. We'd need to have it as a separate agenda item.
Right.
Yep.
But, yes, definitely something I would look forward to.
So, we'll plan to put that on our future agenda soon?
That's great, good.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything before we move on? Are we good? Okay. Thank you, Michael. And thank you, everybody, for, I know it's, you know, with summer schedules and everything, trying to get evaluations and time with Michael and, and travel and stuff. It's, so I appreciate everybody getting...
Appreciate all the work you put into it, manager.
Thank you. My pleasure. So, the next thing on the agenda is to discuss the date for the volunteer breakfast. I know last meeting, we had talked, Yolanda had graciously offered her, her house to host our annual volunteer event. And we were talking about potential, we had discussed maybe some point in August. I think maybe we need to, to, to clarify, like, if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna do it at Yolanda's, if we want to look at other options, what, what the date would be. I, I think if I remember correctly, there were some questions about, like, Board of Health, if, like, we would need to have, like, what the process would look like to be able to host a town event at someone's house. So, I don't know if, if we have...
Yeah, I...
Michael, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, we, we had a couple of legal questions, and I did inquire of Attorney Me, you know, what, what some of those would be. The, the main question would be is if the Board is looking at supporting this, utilizing Select Board funds, then no matter where we have it, whether that's Yolanda at your house, like Brandy said, you so graciously offered, or another location, we would have the, the liability associated with, with having an event. Can't necessarily absolve us of that regardless of where we have it. So, that was the main question. And then we would just have to follow the Board of Health protocols, you know, if there were going to be, depends on what kind of food we would, that would be served and all of that stuff.
So, in, in years past, we've had it basically at, on town, on town property at the community center. And I graciously appreciate the offer that Yolanda has made. And I, and I think that to avoid any additional legal issues that may arise or questions that may arise with the funding and stuff, to keep it clean, and not that it isn't, but to keep it clean and without any questions. I mean, I, I would entertain probably having on a, on a town, town, town location. Especially for the legal, and it's, and believe me, it's not, I'm, I'm trying to protect the aspect of, you know, you, you and your family and, and not get into this legal, legal ramifications that may come down the road and especially with the Board of Health type of deals. So, I mean, that, that's, that's just me. But where you guys want to go is fine by me, but, and I graciously appreciate the offer. But I think we've had it on town property before. Why don't we just continue doing that? And I'll leave it at that, up to you.
Okay.
Question?
Oh, Rob, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was, I was at the last meeting's discussion. Are we still talking about a morning breakfast thing? And, and it, would it be outside? Is that, is that where we ended up? Or is it Saturday or Sunday morning?
No, this was something, Rob, we talked several meetings ago. And Yolanda had offered to host a...
Yeah.
...a volunteer event. And, and as I best recall, let Yolanda speak for herself, but it was an afternoon event.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I, I just didn't remember. So, it's not really a breakfast as we're discussing it.
Right, so, because we weren't able to do it in March like we typically do, and I know people have wanted to do something outside, and we have a yard that we are willing to offer, but it sounds like, you know... And I know at our last meeting, what came up was the serve safe and stuff like that, that if we were cooking and things like that. So, I mean, we're still willing to host, but if we then want to, instead of us cooking or us cooking, we, you know, have a caterer come in like we do, you know, bring TJ's in, we're still willing to do that. But if people are concerned about liability, you know, and we're not comfortable doing it in a personal home, I'm, you know, I'm not offended. I was just trying to do something a little bit different. I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, fine at the community center, but it being summer, and I just thought it would be fun to do. So, I'm open to anything. I, you know, again, the idea of doing it in the afternoon, just something different to recognize our volunteers. So, I'm, you know, if we don't want to do anything now and we want to wait again, that's fine, too.
The only issue with the community center is, is, you know, as we get into September, soccer starts up, and so Saturdays are pretty, pretty packed over there. So, I'm not sure if, like, we would have space, especially if we wanted to do something outside. What are your thoughts, Steve?
Well, I, you know, I, I'm actually the one that, you know, brought up the, the concern about, or just asking the questions about legalities and/or serve safe. I mean, I, you know, I am perfectly agreeable to, you know, have Yolanda host it. I think it's a, you know, great idea. And I think, you know, it would be just a, you know, I've been to a couple of parties at Yolanda's backyard, and it's really comfortable and nice. And I think it would be a nice place to, to, to host something like that. You know, as far as, as catering it, that might be the, the safest thing to do is to cater it rather than, you know, I mean, you know, I'm serve safe certified. But, you know, and there are other folks that could cook, that we could, we could utilize. But might be just easier to have it, have it catered. You know, the, the events at the community center get catered all the time. It's pretty cut and dry. So, you know, I, you know, certainly would be, you know, supportive of, of taking Yolanda up on our offer.
Okay. All right. Rob?
Question? Yeah, just, you guys probably mentioned this, but Yolanda, people are going to be able to park? Okay, at, on Prospect or?
Well, we live right across from Webster Road, so people could park down there. Or if it gets really busy, they could go around the corner to Prospect Heights. I mean, like I said, we've had people at our house, we've had upwards of 80 people.
You park on Newcastle, too?
Some, they could easily, right, they could park on Newcastle. I mean, there's certainly, um...
Steve's house, okay.
You know, it's, or just on Newcastle, there, there, there is place to park. If people really want to, they could park at the Warren School and walk up. You know, or if they live close enough, they could just walk over. So, like you, Rob.
No, I don't do any walking. Forget it.
Again, I just, again, just...
Yeah, okay.
We weren't able to do our March 1.
Yeah.
We'd love to, you know, but again, whatever people are comfortable with.
Okay. So, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, for me personally, I think, I think it would be, it'd be great. I think, you know, I think the only thing we'd have to worry about maybe is, is your pool, you know, for liability and, and things like that, so...
Well, you know, and now that, you know, as I was thinking about it just the other day, I'm like, we're thinking of a potential August date, so like the 27th, to sort of end of summer kind of thing. Depending on the weather, it might not be pool weather. Though if it keeps this heat up, it'll definitely be.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I'm not currently lifeguard certified, but, you know.
Okay.
I think we'd be fine from a perspective of, you know, keeping people safe.
Okay. All right. So, do, do we want to look at doing it that last, whatever that date is?
The Saturday before Labor Day.
27th, yeah. August 27th, okay. And that works, that's okay with me.
Okay.
I guess the next question is, how do we determine what, if we agree we're going to cater it, how do we get that information? And, you know, I know Susan's always handled this in the past. I mean, I, you know, I'm assuming one of us could also look into it and...
So, is this gonna be, it's not, this won't be a breakfast, it'll be an afternoon?
I think an afternoon, right? So, hamburgers, hot dogs, or some, yeah, some kind of barbecue from, I don't know, pick somebody and...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Do we want to just, I mean, we could authorize funds to be used and then, because if we're...
And if we're looking at the 27th, we do have a meeting before that, so...
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if we get a quote...
Right.
And then we can, we can, you know, not to exceed amounts.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll plan on...
Like, 1 to 3, something like that, on the 27th?
1 to 3, probably 2 to 4. Or, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so 2 to 4 PM on the 27th. I think Susan has the, the general list that, that, you know, and does like an e-vite to all...
Drop date data as to when to respond from, so you have the numbers to...
Yeah.
Let the caterer know, you know, how many heads are going to be there, so...
Yeah, we have, we have some time, which is good. Okay. I know. So, Susan, you, is it doable to put something together somewhat quickly to be able to send out an invitation to folks?
Absolutely. And if you want me to reach out and get a couple price quotes, I can do that, too.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you. All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? So, we'll plan on the, the 27th at Yolanda's from 2 to 4 with catering to be determined and...
That's time on me. God bless you, kid.
Okay. Yeah, it's not my house that we're coming to.
Well, we'll definitely help clean up.
Okay, so, so thank you, Susan, for, for, for doing that. And thank you, Yolanda. This'll be, this'll be a lot of fun, so... And a good way to celebrate all the people that, that volunteer and give service to our community. Yeah, yeah, so...
We can all, all get on our speedos and we'll, we'll be, celebrate the end of summer.
Yes, if you want to go in the pool, bathing suits are required.
No optional bathing suits. Okay. Okay, all right. I think we're good. I think we're moving on. So, the next thing on the agenda is to discuss the comprehensive plan. So, we had met with the, with the Planning Board at the end of June, I believe. Michael had put together a proposal that was much more of a, a master plan versus sort of the comprehensive plan that is mandated by the state. We had talked with the, the Planning Board then, but they had wanted some time to digest it and talk amongst themselves, to react and give us feedback. And so, they had sent us some comments. And I think the, the, you know, I, what I would like to kind of do tonight is really for us as a Board to determine what is, where, what direction we want to go in, what we can agree and get consensus on, and then discuss next steps for, you know, possibly meeting with the Planning Board again to iron out the last details before we move forward, if that sounds about right. So, Michael, I know that we have in front of us the comments that the, the Planning Board had given us. Do you want me to, like, like, talk through some of those changes? Do you want to talk through that? Or, or do we just want to discuss, discuss sort of where we, how we feel about what they came back with?
Do you want me to take a shot at trying to summarize what they put, what they put together?
That would be great. Thank you.
The Planning Board had sent back through Peter the same memo with a couple of modifications based on what we had sent to them. And I'm just going to go through this linearly through the, through the document. So, one of the things that we had proposed was that, you know, we would do an RFP process, and there would be a project management team that would, that would essentially manage the nuts and bolts of that process until we got to the place of, hopefully, where we would... until we got to the place of, hopefully where we would have three finalists, three proposals, that we would then advance to the select board and the planning board as a whole to jointly make a decision on who to select as a, as a consultant. The planning board felt, just based on their comments, that they would prefer to see the final selection of a consultant be made by the planning board after input from the select board. And going back to that project management team, you know, what they had, what they had put there was the project management team would consist of two planning board members, two select board members, town planner, assistant town manager. It would also require the heavy input of the town manager and finance director and other department heads during the information gathering phase. Once a consultant is selected, the consultant would be part of the project management team. I feel that, you know, with some of our, so this is, this is somewhat consistent with what we had put forward. Except I, I do think that some of our employees need to have a little bit more of a role in this than just in the information gathering phase. I think they provide a valuable perspective. Sorry, I'm just, I'm adding comments right now. I'll, I'll stop. Sorry. I'm pining on it. They had added some language that voting members of the Ashland Conference of Plan Steering Committee would consist of Ashland residents and town employees, resident or non-resident, and the consultant would be part of the steering committee as non-voting members. The steering committee would include two planning board members, two select board members, a representative, if possible, from a number of boards and committees that would be finalized. We'd send over a sample list. And then a certain number of members at large be part of the team as well. They also added some clarifying language on the steering committee leadership, that the chair, vice chair and other leadership roles would be filled by resident members and leadership would be selected by the steering committee. And if you get down towards the end, the fi, the initial draft would be, we had proposed that both the select board and the planning board would be, would be the ones reviewing that. They have a, a vote on a final draft being made by the planning board in and of itself. And the planning board having the final vote on the document itself at the very end before it's presented at a town meeting. So those were, sorry, I started adding some of my comments there. Those were really a summary of the changes that they had proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. So, just from my perspective, I think it was, I, I think it's, I think it's great that the, that the feedback from the planning board really recognizes the need to do sort of a, a, sort of a master plan to really incorporate what we've done on the strategic planning and to really expand what has, what the state has mandated for a comprehensive plan process. I think it's, I think it's in the best interest of Ashland to do, to do a master plan. So I think that, that that is a, a good thing. The, the one thing I will say, and then I'll open it up for, for other comments, is that, you know, I, I see this as, as a partnership with the, with the planning board. I think that it's important that it's a partnership. I think that having equal people on the steering committee is, is important. But I also feel that being a part of the, the process and the vote and the decision making is also really vital. Because, you know, we're really looking to put together this plan for what, the next ten, fifteen years for Ashland. And a lot of it is, is strategic, strategic based. So I think that from a policy perspective, I think that the select board really needs to be an equal partner with the planning board on this. So I, I, I do think that that is, is personally important to me. So I'm, I'm curious how everybody else feels as well. Steve?
So I, I agree. You know, I think, I'd like to see us actually get away from calling this a comprehensive plan. Call it something else, because I think there's, you know, you can get hung up on the semantics. You know, to me, and I, when we first met with the planning board, the first joint meeting, I believe that the Bedford Mass Comprehensive Plan was used as a, as a template. And I took the time to review that and it's, it's an excellent document. It is, you know, exactly what you would expect from a comprehensive plan. And it hits all of the eight bullet points that the state prescribes. But it's, it's uniquely focused on land use and on the built environment. And it doesn't truly act in a comprehensive way, at least the way I would define comprehensive. And there's so many other components that we, we talk about all the time that are, should be part of this process. If we're going to be looking at Ashland for the next twenty years, we need to be looking at the demographic changes. We need to be looking at, you know, our financial stability as a, as a community. We need to be looking at our, our, you know, financial forecasts, I believe. You know, all of these things should be components of, of this, this plan. So I, I'd like to see us call it something different. I think this is an opportunity to, you know, to really be collaborative as, as, as a local government, as an elected local government. And, you know, I, I'm concerned that we are, you know, kind of moving towards a, you know, this kind of turf conflicts regarding what should be, you know, something that is, we're, we're working together to accomplish on behalf of the community in the most, you know, efficient way. So that's kind of where, you know, my concerns are. I just think we have to, I think we need to call it something different.
I agree. Yolanda?
So I, I want to echo what Steve said plus add a few things. I think that I read part of the Bedford Plan and I agree, it's still very much straight comprehensive plan. I think either calling it a master plan or looking at what Wellesley did, calling it a unified plan, I think it'll allow more diversity of what we discuss versus a straight comprehensive plan. I like that the, the planning board has said that we should have two members as part of it and as well as the large community contingency that they want to have as part of it. For me, though, in regards to the decision making, my thought is the more people involved in making some of those decisions about the RFP, about the final plan. So instead of just the planning board, five-member board, by allowing it to be the planning board and the select board together, I think it'll be a better representation of our community. Because I think we look at things differently than some of the planning board members. And the more people involved, to me, makes the whole plan more valid. And each board working together, I think, is a benefit to our community rather than just the planning board doing it. I, I think some of the recommendations they have is great. My only concern, similar to Steve, is if it's just the planning board making the decision and then it would really, to me, just be a comprehensive plan if it's just coming from them. If it's the two groups working together, I think it'll be a more master plan or a unified plan. And I think the community will accept it better. And it'll do, it'll do more for the community for the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't disagree with what Steve and Yolanda has said. I actually, I agree with everything that's been already said. Under, under my tone of voice, I use the word master plan. It could be whatever plan that you wanted, a universal town plan, whatever you want to call it, and you put it everything together, like a recipe. You pick out the different things that you want and you make it so that it fits the town. The Bedford Plan, I did read over, it fits their community. You know, the Wellesley Plan that, that Mike looked at, you know, it fit their community as well. I mean, if, if other towns have already invented the wheel, we don't need to reinvent it. We could tear, tear apart their, their plans and pick and choose out what we feel would be best from their plans and utilize it and change it into, for, for our town to make, make it beneficial for us. To have the, the planning board involved in this process as well, I think is great. To get a, a steering committee involved with the community out there, that's what this is all about. You know, to shut them out, you don't want to do that. You want to get them involved. But once everything is said and done and you have some sort of agreement, then it comes down to the two boards to approve what has been presented and worked on as, as a group totally. And if that process is utilized that way, I think we'll have a great plan to utilize and it won't become a, a dust collector. It'll be something that will be an outline that all boards will be able to use. The select board, the management committee, you know, in, in this town, be able to use as an outline. And I think to help direct everything for the future of this community, that's what it's all about. And I think that's what this plan is all about. So, whatever you want to call it, it's, it is what it is. And just make it work. You can put any title on it, you just want to make it work for everybody. And with all those components that we've already discussed. So, thank you, Madam.
Thanks, Joe. Rob, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think if I, so I just want to review where we are. This is really, Michael put together what we're looking at now, right? In response to the planning board's suggestion of a comprehensive plan. And I think, and they made a few comments. So I think it'd be most useful if we tried to decide if we agree or disagree with the comments they've made, just so we can move this along. Regarding Steve's idea of changing the name, I'm, I'm not sure I see the utility in that. I think comprehensive plan is a well-known term that is involved in the state statutes, which doesn't mean that we have to do exactly what's in the state law. But I think it's most useful to continue that term and not get into other. And we, and if I, and as I recall, Michael has made some very detailed additions that are in this proposal that I think everyone agrees with, including folks on the planning board. So, I don't like the idea of kind of changing the name of this process at this point, so I just wanted to put that out there. And as I understand it from looking at the comments, there's kind of three main things. One is, I think, you know, Michael has said that he thinks we should be more strongly involved in the selection, or at least the select board, in the selection of the, of the consultant. And that one, I'm, you know, I can kind of take or leave that one, frankly. I think whether I'm on the project management team or which of us are on it, we'll have a lot of input into that discussion. So, do I need to, as a vote, as a, as a full select board, see all these three finalists? Maybe not. I don't, I'm not sure how, you know, I think I would trust the planning board and the town planner and the town manager and other people that are involved, our, our representatives, to, to make a good selection and let the planning board vote on it. That's just my take on it. And I think that would get to a lot of diversity of opinion. The other thing is, I think they did make a good point that we should not have town employees voting actively, which in some ways, actually voting can be relatively minor. But I think, so I think you could still have a very substantial impact as a staff person, even though you maybe don't finally vote on it. Because I think by the time most bodies vote on things, things are pretty well decided anyway. So I, and I think it would be, it would have a good image in terms of some of the public that the, that the town staff is not voting and selecting the consultant. The third major difference I see is the final approval of the plan. That's where, if I understand the planning board's comments, they, they, they want to make the final approval by themselves, if I understand it. And I, I actually disagree with that. I think, and, and Michael pointed this out in our discussion, and it's, and it's really important, I think, and the rest of us, I think, understand that, that if we're going to put out a comprehensive plan and have it approved at a town meeting, we as a select board should also own it and be ready to stand up and defend. And, and, and as a follow-up, carry out those actual policies or measures that are in the comprehensive plan. So, of all the things they've suggested, I think that we should have a formal role in approving the final plan, however that works. So that's, that's the gist of my, I, I agree with, you know, I, I could, I don't think we need to do the final, the selection of the consultant, given this process. I like the project management, the steering committee, I like the things Michael has added. So I think it's a, a very good process and a partnership, I think. But I think it, and I, and I think, you know, again, to reiterate, we, you know, it's, it's fine that staff don't vote on these committees. But I think it is important that we do approve this plan. That's part of our, that really isn't our wheelhouse, I feel. So that's my comments on, on the, on this proposal.
So, let me just respond to the, you know, as far as what we call it, Rob, I, I really honestly truly could care less what we call it. I, again, a comprehensive to me means one thing, and I know it means something else relative to state statute. So if we call it the comprehensive plan, let's make it truly comprehensive. That, that's really the gist of my comments. You know, as far as the, you know, the, the selection process, as far as the, the voting by, by town staff, I think we've all served on, on, on committees, subcommittees, building committees, where town staff have been integral parts of, of, of the process and have been voting members of that process. So, you know, I, I personally don't, would not want to see a situation where we're denying folks that have, you know, a, a, a strong part of the process not being able to, to, to vote on it. So, you know, I think we have a little bit of difference of an opinion on that. But I think, you know, ultimately, I think when we get to our next joint meeting with the planning board, whenever that is, I think, you know, from my sense, we've got, you know, for the most part, a fairly consistent view of how we want to move forward. And, you know, I think there's a few differences that, that you've brought up, which are fine. But, you know, I think at our next, at the, at the joint meeting, we will iron these out, no doubt, and, and, and move forward. And, you know, I, I don't think it's, serves us any purpose really to, to, you know, debate and get into the weeds tonight. Even though I'm debating and getting into the weeds.
We're getting into, yeah. I think it is useful to bring this stuff out, though. Yeah.
Michael, I know you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to offer just some thoughts and some comments on what the planning board had, had put back. And I, I think Rob did a good job of summarizing the three different brackets. You could, you could put some of these disagreements under. Personally, I, I think the consultant is, is going to be probably the most critical piece of this whole formula. They, they're, if you ask any entity that's done a comprehensive plan or integrated plan or unified plan, the ones, the ones that seem to be successful have a really, really good consultant. And so I think that's why it's so important for the board to have a voice on that. So that's just my thoughts with regards to that. And then also, like, like Rob said, what we had talked about, this is the most substantial policy document that's going to be out there for the next ten, ten years, maybe more. And I think it really should have the select board's ownership as part of it. I think that's really, really important. And finally, you know, I just want to address the, the staff or employees' role in this. I think, you know, I think to truly measure the success of a plan, you have to see it, how well it's being implemented. And the ones who are going to be charged with the implementation, for the most part, are going to be our employees, our staff and employees. So I think they're going, you know, whether they're voting or not, I think we should have a pretty prominent role in the process in trying to, to help flesh this out and, and come up with a plan that, again, is not just going to sit on the shelf, but is also going to be a useful guide in making decisions for the next ten, twenty years. So I think that's really, I think, I think it's really important to have staff input on that. And, and to have a more, have some kind of formal role. Again, maybe it doesn't have to be a voting member, but. And and to have a more, have some kind of formal role. Again, maybe it doesn't have to be a voting member, but something like that.
Thank you, Michael. Um, yeah, I mean, I I'm, you know, I had gone through the comments and you know, my concern is really, you know, where we talk about that that the process will be spearheaded by the planning board based on the work of the steering committee. It just seems like, um, to me that the select board, um, is taken out of this process. And even though we we would have representation on the steering committee, the ownership part of it is really important, I think, to have joint ownership of this. So, um, so I I agree, I agree with you, Michael. And that and that goes to the vote, that goes to the RFP process, that goes to the to to the entire process, in my opinion. So. So, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I may, Madam Chair, it's, I I'd like to compare this to the financial policy that, uh, was, uh, constructed a few years ago. It was done between the school and the town. And if we didn't have ownership by both sides, it would more, it would not work. It wouldn't work well at all. And they agreed, we agreed, it was compromised, did it had to be done, and it's were great for the town. And I don't see this scenario any different than what it what it was a few years ago when we decided to do the financial policy. It's the same thing. You both have to have ownership in this, and you can't deny one from the other. I mean, I just, I appreciate all the work that was done with the planning board, and I I I don't want to put a fence up in between the two of us because it doesn't help in in any scenario, in any way, shape and form. But to leave, to leave policymaking group, oh, wait a minute, that's the charter, that's the select board. Well, if this is considered policy, then how do you, how do you not go by what the charter says? You know, it's okay for some, but it's not for others. I I I just have a problem that we, if you're going to follow the letter of the law, you follow the letter of the law, and you work together with it. And you work within the four corners of that of that specific law. And 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 the guidelines that that are given to us as as a town to use. And I think if we don't follow that, you you're going to have some issues.
I also think, um, just in general, they're they're coming to us for funding for this, to be able to hire a consultant and to spend some a decent amount of money on this. So I think as a board, we have to be comfortable with what this is, what the process is going to look like to be able to support the financial outlay of 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 funds. Yolanda?
The other thing I think is that we need to be working collaboratively. It can't be the responsibility of one board or the other from the RFP process through the final plan process. I think we'll have a better document, we'll have a better plan to bring forward to the community if we just have that broader voice. And for me, I th- I think the name is somewhat important because for many people, they think comprehensive plan and it's zoning and very specific things. The last time we were working on a comprehensive plan, we did add some things, and it's nice to see that they have recommended that those things stay in the comprehensive plan. But to everyone's point so far, by saying comprehensive plan, that means a specific thing. And you say comprehensive plan to someone, and they think land use and zoning. You say strategic plan to somebody, and that means something else. How are we going to move forward? What are the strategies we're going to do for that? By bringing those two together and giving it a different title, it presents a different outlook. It presents a different way of looking at what this is going to be long-term and what it is going to be and presented to the community. But I do agree, we do, you know, the next step needs to be a joint meeting with the planning board to finalize these discussions. And then make it, and make a final decision to move this forward, because we do need to move this forward. This is something we've talked about as a community for a long time. And I thank the planning board from this past spring to bring it forward to us. I know it's something we've been talking about for a while. So I thank them for bringing it forward. I thank them for the meeting that with the joint meeting that we had. And I want us to continue working collaboratively like that to move this project forward.
I agree. Mark, I see your hand. We're 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 not going to take any public comment um, on this. We're just literally discussing this amongst our board tonight. So. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to open it up. I'm sorry. So with with that, the next steps I I think should be to 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 have a a joint meeting with the planning board. Do we think that that's something that could potentially be accomplished as part of our next meeting, or do we want a separate meeting? Separate meeting?
I think a separate meeting, for sure. We can have some good discussion and make this the sole focus.
Okay.
Yeah, I would suggest pushing this out to September.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. August is going to be tough anyway, at this point, so.
My only concern with, if I, you know, what about adhering to the schedule and getting something to special, uh, town meeting?
So, you know, I I hear you, Rob. I think that if if, I think that's that's all of our goal is to get this to to town meeting for for November, to be able to ask for the funding and have the the consultant in place. But I think the last time we talked about it, I think we had all decided and or talked about the fact that it's more important to get this right. And so I think we're we're getting very close. I think it's it's, um, you know, so hopefully we we can still make the November timeframe, but I think if we can get a date on the calendar for Septem- early September, right after Labor Day, you know, we can, we can kind of start, um, I think at that point, we we will hopefully come to consensus and be able to start moving forward with with the RFP process.
Yeah, I do, and I appreciate that. I think it is important, because this is a years-long process, and the only thing we're going to, I mean, we need to start the funding process now in the RFP selection, um, you know, as soon as possible. So I would, I really do think, uh, being ready for November is essential. I do, um, uh, just, I I, you know, maybe we can fit this in in our next meeting agenda. I don't know. We we have to check with the planning board, but it is getting difficult to schedule things. Maybe they're, you know, I think we've kind of defined, we have three or four differences, as far as I can tell. We should just meet and whether we vote or whatever, just resolve it and move on. I I'd say, that'd be my suggestion.
I I hear you, Rob. I think that, um, scheduling in August is going to be really tough, and it seems like the majority want to do a separate meeting, and I think it would be more productive to do a separate meeting rather than try to squeeze it in for like a twenty, twenty or thirty-minute discussion as part of our our next meeting, honestly.
And our next meeting is the twenty-fourth?
Is the twenty-fourth. Yeah. So do we want to, do we want to look at potential dates for September? And then see, or do we want, Michael, do you want to reach out to Peter and see if, um?
I would say let them look. We have to think of Jewish holidays and all that.
And we can also look at the the, I mean, I've got to look at the funding stuff, too.
Okay.
You know, I've I've said we're going to have two fifty to put to put towards this. I think probably would be good to make sure that that's actually possible. And just, and and don't forget, like, we've, there's a a number of entities involved in that whole funding process. We need to get FinCom on board with it. You know, uh, we we need to get buy-in from a number of different parties.
And when are we closing the um, the the fall town meeting warrant?
We'll probably open it up in, um, at this next meeting in August, on the twenty-fourth, so we could close it. Probably the first week in November.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Steve.
So I, and I would also caution the tendency for us to always be, when I say us, you know, the select board and, uh, other other boards rushing to get things on warrants and to get things on to town meetings without properly being vetted. We've we've done this numerous times. It sounds to me like we have sufficient time to to do this for for fall town meeting, presuming that we we reach consensus at at our joint meeting. But, you know, if that is not the case, you know, then, uh, again, I'd be cautious about just rushing to get it onto a warrant.
So, Michael, um, will you reach out to Peter and see if, um, what the what the planning board's schedule is like for, um, for September?
September, okay.
Yep. Yolanda made a good point. She said that, um, we also have to kind of keep in mind Jewish holidays and other things, too, so.
Well, the other thing is August does have five weeks, so the thirty-first is a Wednesday, so we're not scheduled to meet. Planning board doesn't meet on a Wednesday. It's still, you know, just over a month.
That's open, and then you have the seventh, which is the first.
We could, yeah, I mean, that that would be, I'm fine with that, if if that date.
Fourteenth of September would be the second full week of September. So that would give the the planning board time, too. And then looking at the Jewish holidays, those are usually, uh, on a Friday.
No, they're all over. I don't know what they are this year.
Let me look at a calendar, maybe.
What I'm looking at right now is.
It's supposed, it's going to be really hard to have an actual consultant picked out by a town meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean we can't move forward.
Michael, but could we have a town warrant article for the funding? Limited to, you know, a a limit, and then go from there if we don't, if we don't have the, uh, everything in line by then?
Yeah, Joe, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it as a warrant article. I I would just put forward as a appropriation of free cash.
Appropriation for, okay.
As as part of, under our financial policies, it's a one-time expense.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever's needed to keep moving forward. That sounds like a good approach.
So that way, we're not under the gun and we're not rushing things. For a sec.
So if we look, if we're looking at dates, potentially either the fourteenth of September or the thirty-first of August? Okay, that gives us a starting point, at least?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Michael, would that potentially work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
But they do, uh, the thirty-first of August, oh, that Wednesday, okay, after our Wednesday meeting, okay. The other thing, what are people, what's Thursdays like for people? The planning board often meets on Thursdays, right? That's their meeting day.
They do meet on Thursdays, yeah. Rob, we lost you.
Rob, we lost you. Your volume went down. There you go.
Nope, you're you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Sorry. Yeah, I was just kind of mumbling, I guess. Um, yeah, I would just, I don't know what Thursdays are like with people. That could be, the planning board meets on Thursdays, maybe that Thursday would work for them. I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Michael, we'll check with Peter and, yeah, go from there.
We'll hold the thirty-first for now, it sounds like.
Okay.
And September fourteenth.
And September fourteenth.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Okay, sounds good. Um, does anybody else have anything on the comprehensive plan before we move on?
Nope.
Okay. Um, next on our agenda is the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is that a second, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that passes five zero. Okay. So we don't have anything else, um, on our agenda. We had planned to do a retreat tonight. But because both Michael and 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 Rob are not here in person, we decided to to um, to move that to another date. I don't know if we want, it's, do we want to try to discuss that, not here? Okay, we will, we will not do that. The one thing I want to, hold on, before we adjourn, before we adjourn, just a couple of quick things. I I should have mentioned this when we were doing citizens' participation, but I just wanted to, um, remind folks that our reappointments are going to be at our next meeting, which is, um, August twenty-fourth. And I want to remind, because we've gotten a couple emails on the reappointment process, and I wanted to clarify that we have not changed any policies regarding reappointments. Um, we we did not institute any term limits. We are not removing people from committees or boards because they've served too long. We are, um, you know, Susan has reached out to all the folks that are up for reappointment and asking them if they would like to be reappointed. We've put all of the, yep, to fill out a form. We've put all the positions for all the committees up on our website. Folks are willing, uh, wanting to to serve can, uh, fill out a talent bank form and be considered for those positions. Um, we rely heavily on the committees themselves to make recommendations to us for reappointments and for, um, for new members as well. So I would encourage folks that would like to, uh, serve on a committee to to fill out a talent bank form. And then just a couple other quick things. We did get a couple emails. Um, there was an email from from, uh, Kathy Rooney regarding Fountain Street and traffic, and that was, um, sent to the Traffic Safety Committee to to reduce the speed limit on Fountain Street. I know there was a a really bad car accident this last week. And there's quite a bit of speeding that comes especially from the Framingham side on that. And then the other thing I just wanted to also, um, clarify, that we had received an email quite a while ago regarding, um, leashing dogs, whether it's at Warren Woods or the Ashland Town Forest. I want to remind folks to, um, to keep their dogs leashed when we have a town bylaw. Yep. I did clarify with Carl Hackinson that, um, dogs are allowed at Warren Woods, but they must be registered with the Conservation Office. And folks need to email Becca Solomon, our conservation agent, to register them, but but we love dogs at Warren Woods, so. So they just all must be leashed, and you must pick up after your dogs.
The other thing also, uh, Brandy is to, um, dogs must be leashed also at the state park. It's not a dog park. They have the same leash laws at the state park as we have in the town of Ashland. And there's been numerous situations that have occurred because of unleashed dogs in the state parks. So, it's imperative that, uh, that you be responsible for your furry friends.
Yep, and there is a new dog park in Framingham that opened up. So if you want to put your dogs off leash, it's it's a great little dog park over by Cushing Park.
Can we add to our next agenda a discussion of how we can find people who have their dogs off leash? We don't have to go into it now, but I think we should have a discussion for that.
Yep.
How we can find them.
Good point. I know we did, uh, as a result of that latest incident, uh, I think the police chief got involved, um, um, so, yeah, that'd be, it's worth a discussion.
Yep, we can definitely, we can definitely have a discussion on that. Um, KJ, I see your hand, but we're, we 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 really, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and adjourn for tonight. Like, I, I, we we didn't do, um, ward reports or anything like that, so we're just, um, we're going to go ahead and adjourn for tonight, so I.
I just wanted to thank you all.
Oh. Okay. Well, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night. Enjoy the rest of the summer, everybody.
Yep, we will see you on August twenty-fourth, everyone.
Oh, remind everybody about the, uh, open, uh, community center and library for the cool, cool areas for the next couple of days with the heat.
So, so, and then we also have water restrictions, too. So, just as a, um, so thank you, Joe, for reminding. So we will have, um, the community center and library open for folks who want to cool off, refill their water bottles. Check on your neighbors, check on your pets, like, make sure everybody is safe. The next couple of days are going to be really hot, and then I don't think we're going to get much relief over the weekend either. So, it's going to be kind of another long stretch of of hot, hot weather. So. And then also, just to that point, we're under stage two of water restrictions, which means no outdoor watering except for, um, vegetables. So, um, and that includes handheld watering, that includes hoses and sprinklers, and refilling of your swimming pool. No car washing, stuff like that, so.
Was Rob smiling just now?
There is, uh, there, there is, you know, there seems to be confusion about about what, uh, what stage one and stage two is relative to some of the exemptions that exist. And, you know, if people, instead of of bantering back and forth on Facebook, uh, in in opining on something that they could very easily go to the town bylaw and read, it gives a list of of exemptions to the the restrictions. And that includes, as Brandy said, the watering of of household, uh, gardening. Uh, it, if you have a new lawn, it allows you to water, you know, a newly seeded lawn. If you are getting painted, and you're getting your house painted and you need to wash your house, it allows for that. So, you know, folks, please go to the town bylaws if you have a question about what you can and can't do, rather than post it on on Facebook and expect an intelligent response.
Well, Steve, I think, with all due respect, I think when we got the reverse nine-one-one, it it did state that no, you know, no, uh, no watering of of gardens.
Oh, okay.
So, and that was the response that I got, and I responded to that, no, you can. So, maybe if we have to do a reverse nine-one-one, just to remind people, you can. Yeah, it should be accurate. So at least maybe we should do another reverse nine-one-one and remind people, you can water your vegetable gardens. So, you know, so maybe that's something we should consider doing.
Okay.
One thing I would, um, just to kind of. One thing I would, just a kind of a minor note, when I went to look, and actually, I don't remember if I was on the website or was part of the email, it wasn't immediately apparent. I think those exemptions should be listed with the main announcement. I think that would be helpful, rather than, I think you had to click on it and go somewhere and look it up. So that might be helpful if it was like more obvious, the exemptions, so.
Okay, so we had a motion to adjourn, we had a second, we voted. I think we're officially, officially now adjourned at eight-thirty. No, no, it's hard, it's hard, it's really hard for us to get out of here. So if there is nothing else, we, we are officially all set for tonight. Thank you all, we'll see you on the twenty-fourth. Have a good, have a good rest of your August. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.